Before we get into the official opening, but as you know, Pearland has long tried to keep all of our trees, especially our large historical trees, as well as legacy type trees around our community. Many of the trees that you see today, you know, especially along the creeks and byways, weren't necessarily planted. They got there naturally, and we certainly want to preserve them. And most of you, I don't know if you keep up with it or not, but we're entering November, and November the 5th is Arbor Day. And so we want to honor that tonight. And I've got our urban forester up here to receive this. Let me read this into the record. "Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas in 1889, Texas Arbor Day first appeared in Temple on February the 22nd. The next year, the state of Texas held the first observance of Arbor Day. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, trees can be a solution combating climate change by mitigating adverse effects of paved surfaces, reducing the erosion of our topsoil by wind and water, moderating the temperature, cutting heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air, producing oxygen, and providing ecological balance for a more natural environment. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our roadways, and strengthen our commitment to being the community of choice. And whereas Arbor Day in Texas is held on the first Friday in November, now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim Friday, November the 5th, as Arbor Day, and just ask everybody in our city to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations for the city of Pearland. Signed under my hand and seal of this day, October 25th, 2021." And with that, Jerry, I want to present this to you. I guess we'll get a quick photo, and then I wanted to say a few things. You want to say a couple of things?
Thank you, Mayor Cole. I just want to thank you for doing the proclamation for November 5th. This year, we're going to celebrate Arbor Day by giving out 350 trees on November 5th and 6th. So be sure to check City of Pearland social media to find out times and locations. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Jerry. And to go with that spirit, back in March or April, I think it was March, Aramco donated 1,000 trees that were planted over off of Magnolia at the Environmental Center. And so 1,000 trees were planted around that walking trail that day. So in the spirit of all that, and of course, it's had the year to grow and those good things. So we look forward to more. Thank you. Come on, guys. We ready? All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I don't have my gavel up here, but as you can see, we've got some Cub Scouts and some Boy Scouts here. And we're going to open our meeting here in just a second, and they're going to help lead us in our pledges as we get started tonight. So with that, I want to call to order this regular city council meeting at 6:30 PM on October the 25th, here at Pearland City Hall. So with that, I'm going to lead in an invocation, and then we're going to turn to these fine young men and women to lead us in our pledges. If you'll stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, I just want to come and just take a moment to stop and ask you and invite you to be a part of our proceedings tonight. Father, we count it a privilege and a pleasure to come and serve with this council, with this staff, the great citizens of our city. And I just ask that you be with us as we deliberate the business of our city. I ask for the ideas and the camaraderie of not only the council, but staff and our citizens to participate fully and wholly in their government. Father, I ask that you continue to not only bless our community, but protect it. I ask you, Father, to ask for protection specifically for the men and women of our police department and our fire department, our EMS, the men and women that are out there on the streets fixing and repairing, and sometimes put into dangerous situations, and just ask that you protect them. As always, Father, we ask that you protect the men and women around the world, protect them, and guide them back home. And again, Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Who's going to lead our American flag? Nope, not there. Just a second. Come on up. Give you the mic.
Would the audience please join us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Who's going to help me with the Texas flag? I think you are, correct? Come on.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. There you go. Thank you. I'm telling you, that was a... Thank you for that. It's always good to see our scouts come out and be a part of our proceedings here. We're so glad to have them here, just like having our citizens come and be a part of us tonight. So with that, we've called to order. We've had number two, number... Moving into number three, roll call of our certification of Quorum. We have all members of the city council present, with the exception of Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Hernandez, who will be absent the remainder of the evening. I believe he's ill. So we wish him well and wish him speedy recovery. With that, we'll move forward to citizens' comments, and I did receive a handful. Got them here. Unless you signed up to speak to a specific item, we'll hold those comments. If you signed up on a specific agenda item, all other comments, I think, are generic by nature, not necessarily on the agenda. So when your name is called, please go to the podium, give us your name and address. And up on the screens, you'll see a clock for three minutes. Limit your comments to three minutes, and we appreciate each and every one that are here tonight. First up is Mr. Joseph Yao. Thank you for being with us. Yeah, podium right there in the back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my lion brothers, David, Trent, I guess Adrian's not feeling well today. What I wanted to talk today about is the Hughes Ranch Road Expansion.
Mr. Yao, go ahead. And just for the record, give us name and address.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Joseph Yao. My address is 4023 Crystal Lake Circle South, 77584. So I wanted to speak about the Hughes Ranch Road Expansion, which was two miles between Smith Ranch Road and Cullen Road. And I last spoke November 2020, and I will say, I much prefer to speak in person versus via Zoom. I, as someone who resides off of Hughes Ranch Road, I'd just like to know, who can I find out the answers regarding to why there's 160-day delay? How it moved from July of 2020, January of '21, to July of 2021, to now I understand it's going to be November 2021. And also, with that being said, over the two-mile stretch, much of it is done. I think according to the statistics, 88% is done, 95% by time. How is it that none of the road that's been completed is usable? Now, as I did my research tonight, I noticed that there was a call for $191,000 to pay extra to the manager of this project. And I guess I look to them to be the ones that are supposed to be saying, we should at least get some of this to be usable. And so, you know, if it's that manager who I need to speak to, or if it's someone else I need to speak to, I'd just like to know what's going to happen. I hear November 2021, but I don't have confidence. And why I don't have confidence is because I drive that road every day from Pearland to Spring, Texas. And I go there so that I can get on 288. And I want to say thank you very much for your time, but if someone could let me know who I should speak to, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Epperson, would you or Mr. Upton get with Mr. Yao tonight?
We will.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving to our next speaker, Mr. Adam Carroll.
Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt, 77581. And I'm just coming up here with a general compliment and thank you on behalf of the Police Officers Association and the, I feel like I can say, employees in general. Mayor Cole, I appreciate your leadership. Every time that I spoke, you were real quick at the conclusion to have encouraging words and really promote everybody working together to get this comp and class survey done in a fair manner. Council members, I appreciate each and every one of you. You've certainly allowed employees to have input into this, saw the importance of that, and made sure that it happened, and ultimately, you know, had the voting decision on whether or not to move forward with it. So I applaud you for all your hard work. It's much appreciated. And I know the vast majority of my coworkers feel that same way, if not all of them. So thank you. I think I need to give a special thank you to Mr. Pearson and Mr. Frazier. They were early on in the process, meet with us. We did. Happy to answer questions. They asked questions and worked towards a solution. So I appreciate y'all's willingness to work with everybody on that as well. And I know Ms. Lorraine James and the HR team, I appreciate the time you put in, meeting with me, and the email chains and keeping everybody in the loop. It meant a whole lot. So I just personally really appreciate that you worked with me and ultimately helped me spread the information. So thank you. And I know finance were probably hating me because it probably seemed like they were having to go back all the time and rework numbers, but I certainly appreciate you guys doing that. And I know he's not here tonight, but I need to thank my chief, Johnny Spires, mostly because he has to put up with me every day. But he's a good guy to work for, and I'm really proud to work for him. But again, thank you to all those involved. It was definitely a team effort, and it was so, so appreciated. So I just want to make sure y'all know that we feel that way, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Sergeant Carroll. Next up, we had Tito and Lily Edwards. Thank you for being here tonight. And again, name and address for the record.
My name is Tito Edwards. On behalf of my wife and I, we live at 2925 Indigo Drive, West, West Pearland. This is in regards to the law not allowing stray pets to be returned to animal control that are found outside of city limits. My wife and I, a week and a half ago, found a dog on the streets of Houston, and immediately contacted Animal Control in Houston. They told us, since we are citizens and residents, well, residents of Pearland, we were not allowed to return the dog. So we came to Animal Control in person here in the city of Pearland, and we were told they could not accept our stray animal that we found because the dog was not found in city limits of Pearland. So to make a long story short, my wife and I parked outside the police department on Cullen Drive, and I was walking the dog to give him a break. And a kind fireman was nice enough to take our dog and submit it to Animal Control. Again, Animal Control figured it out and said, no, we cannot accept the dog. Fortunately, a local fireman in Pearland did take the dog. And a few days ago, we located the owner and were preparing the dog to be sent back to South Carolina. The point is, is that there's a lot more to the story. It was very stressful. It was at one point, Animal Control suggested to us that we just release the dog back onto the streets of Houston, and my wife and I disagreed. And that's about it. The law, whatever the reasoning behind it, needs to be adjusted, or something along the lines, to make it easier for stray dogs or any stray animal that needs to be returned, returned back to Pearland, regardless of where they were found. On a side note, it would be nice if the fire... I also found out that fire stations here in Pearland are not allowed to keep pets. So if that could be addressed as well, the change. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for listening, and you all have a blessed evening.
Thank you very much for that. And we do have Mr. Edwards' contact information, should PD want to get in touch with him on that specific. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mr. Charlie McMurray. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. McMurray.
Good evening, Charlie McMurray, 5209 Spring Branch Drive, Pearland, Bexarrea County, Texas. Is at first, like former Speaker, Police Officer Adam Carroll said, is I want to compliment the council for rectifying a serious error committed by council for several years, and finally adopting a, and creating and funding a salary step program for all employees. I want to compliment council for taking that action. As a taxpayer, I expect council to properly maintain and fund this new step salary schedule with proper COLA adjustments for each step of the salary schedule, and also, more importantly, to ensure that the newly revised salary schedule rewards the productive, efficient employees based on their personnel evaluation, not merely solely based on chronological tenure, because some people are more proficient and productive than others, and that needs to be acknowledged and addressed by Human Resources, helping the individual departments with that. Secondly, speaking of employee evaluations, this council appoints and reviews the municipal court judge, because a lot of us are used to electing our judges, and the municipal court judge is appointed. I want, I desire for council to take notice of the complaint that I had to file with the Texas Commission on Judicial Conduct in June of 2020, in complaint number 20-1184, because the court was refusing to release judicial case records that I had requested as a member of the public. The Texas Commission on Judicial Conduct subsequently issued a sanction in August of this, August 19th of this year. of this year as a result of of my complaint, as I hold in this, and I provided all that information to council previously. Constitutional law, case law, statutory law plainly state that judicial records shall be available, usually available to the public because of the importance of public access is that we turn around and look at code complaints, animal complaints, and as you, as council moves forward to address the short term rental issue, being able to see the action that our municipal court takes is a, is an important thing. Is that I strongly suggest that professional education for the council, professional education for our municipal court judge be considered from available state resources or nothing less than the local Bexar County Bar Association. Thanks for your time. I want to remind everybody that there's an election on November 2nd. We need to amend the Texas Constitution several more times to add to the other 500 amendments that we have on the Texas Constitution. And more importantly, we've got to figure out how we're going to provide any additional funding to the Pearland ISD. So remember, early voting is going on, elections November 2nd, time's up.
He's a pro. He's done this before. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. The other people who have signed up to speak have signed up to speak on a particular issue that is on the agenda. So we're going to move forward to new business. We did take a few things and and changed our agenda around tonight. Mr. Orlando, would you put new business item number one on the table, please?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R 2021-204, show moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Before we get to staff report on that, we do have a citizen that has signed up to speak, Ms. Kelly Moody.
Thank you, Mayor Cole, Councilman, and City Staff. I am super excited to be here tonight to respectfully request your approval of this resolution to accept $750,000 in grant funds from Texas Parks and Wildlife secured by Representative Ed Thompson. This is a huge opportunity for us to make our dream of this inclusive playground come true. And I also wanted to update your documentation. The packet that you have says that we have fundraised 800, $186,000. I'd like to update, wait, I'm wrong, 136. I'd like to update that. We have raised with the diligent work of our board member Nikki Camper. As of May 1st, when she kicked off our fundraising, we are now at $180,000 locally fundraised. That means we're $30,000 away from our goal. We're 95% complete and that remaining $30,000 is in the works. We've got meetings scheduled to hopefully confirm that those extra dollars very soon. Yeah, I wish I had a date, which I could say end of the month, but that's a few days away, but very soon. And then I just really want to express my gratitude to the city. So many different departments are working on this from not only Parks and Rec, but Finance Grants. And everybody in the room, I think, has touched this project. It's an amazing collaborative effort and I'm really humbled and appreciative to be a part of this project. And one last thing Nikki wanted me to remember to say was that we currently have 56 entities that are going to be on our donor wall. Any donation amount of 500 and above will be permanently recognized on our donor wall at the location. So I just want to put that plug out there. We will gladly accept your funds and recognize you appropriately. Thank you so much, everyone.
That's awesome. So with that, any staff report on this?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a required resolution as part of the State of Texas Grant Program. And this, as was mentioned, very pleased and fortunate, we were, allotted this money to advance very positive improvement to the Shadow Creek Sportsplex with this all ages, all abilities park improvement. So the grant doesn't require a match per se, but it is a specific grant that was facilitated by our state rep, Ed Thompson, and want to thank him as well, as well as the Forever Parks Foundation for their endeavoring and working with our staff to advance this. And as a couple of council members saw, the park is going to be just a standout addition to our inventory. Represents a gigantic leap forward in our ability to provide space for residents and visitors of all abilities and looking forward to getting this going. Nothing to add.
Right. And I, our state representative, Ed Thompson, is in the back of the room. Representative Thompson, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here with you tonight and thank you for recognizing that. You know, I had an opportunity this session to be on appropriations and I was on a subcommittee which covered Articles 6, 7, and 8, which encompassed Texas Parks and Wildlife. And when we saw the the grants that were available, you know, asked the question about that and because I had been to the kickoff for this park and I knew, you know, it was going to be quite a stretch for the amount of money that was going to be necessary to get this done. And, you know, we have a lot of people in our society that don't have the opportunity to be included in a lot of the, a lot of the things that we do today. And I felt like this was an opportunity, not only for the city of Pearland, but also for the entire region. This is going to be, I believe, a regional park. I believe a lot of people will, will come to Pearland because of it. Many of the people that I talked to, you know, were very excited about the fact it was going to be here and they would, they were willing to drive to come here, allow their children to be able to have a park like this participate in. So I not only believe that it's a huge thing for our city, but also for House District 29 and what it'll mean to to us. And I think it sets the bar for many other communities. Something that we sometimes have, like I said, people in our communities that sometimes are overlooked. And and many times they are, they are certainly a very small number, thank goodness, but a very important part of our, our fabric of each of our communities. So I'm very excited about being able to do this. I also had some help from our Chairman of Appropriations, Dr. Greg Bonin, who is the Chair of Appropriations. He's represents the Friendswood area and he was very instrumental in allowing us to work with Chairman Wally out of Houston, who was the Chair of these, this Subcommittee. And so we were able to secure the funds and I'm very excited about it and very excited to see this park be built and, like I said, the the opportunity for people to come and to enjoy it. So thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up for council questions, comments, concerns.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I I had the chance, I guess, just last week to go out with the the mayor and some of our staff members to go and see this new sportsplex. And it's going to really be a facility that the entire city can be proud of. And we we saw the the ground being laid for the inclusive playground as well. So extremely grateful for the the work of Forever Parks and and for Kelly Moody and Nikki Camper. And very grateful to my old boss, Representative Ed Thompson, for his important work on this too. So this is going to be something great for for Pearland. I think we're going to be a leader in this and I'm very excited about it. So thanks for everyone on on staff and in the community who made this reality.
Any other questions, comments? Remember Camper?
I just want to say really briefly, I'm really, really, really thankful for what the Forever Parks team is doing. They put a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears doing events and Ed Thompson and what he did in Austin was like a booster rocket and and we wouldn't have this park without him. So I'm I'm real happy for everybody to to see that and for the kids who don't have the ability to play at a park that's down the street. They got to go to Deer Park, I think, or is it Pasadena, 20, 30 minutes away. Having that in our community is gigantic. And I just want to say thank y'all for your efforts and I can see the finish line and I'm real excited when we get out there next to the Miracle Field, it will be this park and I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking. Thank you, Ed Thompson. Thank you, Forever Parks.
Yeah, I just want to echo, this is almost an emotional evening for me. Our family has a nephew who's nine in a wheelchair, suffers with spina bifida. My mother-in-law reached out to me some seven, eight years ago, Ellie, and said, why is it, why doesn't our city have something like this? Why aren't we providing this for all citizens? And and you really think about, we are an inclusive city. We want to be an inclusive city. We want to welcome anyone and everyone to call Pearland home and it also means people of different abilities. And this park is going to complete some of that inclusivity and I'm I'm very proud to be a part of that. And so it's, it's great to see not only the Forever Parks Foundation, but but Representative Thompson, what you did in Austin to help do this, I want to echo, a booster rocket is is exactly it. It it just sent shockwaves across our community to get this funding. Thank you to the committee. Obviously, they had to vote and allow it to go through and and when we go to Pearland Day in Austin next time, we need to make sure that we specifically go and thank those, thank those folks for being a part of this. And we, we, as Member Orlando said it, we we had an opportunity to go and visit the park area in the phase two of our Shadow Creek Park under construction, be be complete here pretty soon. And we got a chance to see where this playground will be, will be housed, where it'll go up. But in addition to that, you know, the city, along with the, I think, the Mud District out there, we're creating a Miracle Field. And if you don't know what that is, there's several Miracle Fields across Houston, not many, but it's a place, it's a field designed specifically for kids with certain abilities to be able to play ball. And again, it it only seems fitting and natural to have to have this inclusive playground sitting next door to it. So the space is incredible. It's a great spot. Our family welcomes this greatly. Kelly, you've been persistent. You've been persistent to make this happen. Thank you.
With that, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camper?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-204.
All right, moving forward, we have item six, public hearing number one. I'll read this end of the record. Public hearing on Community Development Block Grant, CDBG allocations from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for FY 2021, annual CDBG allocation $428,094 and FY 22, CDBG allocation $462,666. With that, we'll start with a staff presentation and I see Mr. Hardy in the back.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, especially for giving me that tough act to follow. I should have stayed at my seat and done this, but I was having technical difficulties with my laptop. So we want to tonight take advantage of an opportunity to provide some corrective action for a mistake with regard to our HUD allocation for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. HUD actually issued our allocation notices in 2020 and 2021 with erroneous dollar amounts. And the corrective action for that did not allow us to take corrective action when we submitted our action plans to HUD. So therefore, there's going to be a little bit of delay in getting our grant agreement. And we want to make sure we cover the required steps that it takes to make sure we comply with the, with the regulations. So we're doing this as a technicality, but it has to be done and we apologize to the public and staff and our elected officials, but this shouldn't take long. So this slide provides some basic information for those that don't know. We do receive a Community Development Block Grant allocation from HUD based on our entitlement status. Being a city over 50,000 in population, we automatically qualify for that CDBG allocation. And we use those funds to assist with various social services, infrastructure redevelopment, community development activities, particularly around housing. Just to give you a little bit of background on how that formula is derived, there are two HUD CDBG formulaic calculations that are used to determine how an entitlement or participating jurisdiction gets their money. The two are described above in the slide. The difference between the two is Formula B is really for older cities. It provides a calculation element that provides a formula component for those that have pre-1940s housing. And if if you can look at the two options, that's weighted at a much higher, in fact, double the other category's third element, which is overcrowded housing units, which are weighted at 25%. So being a relatively young city like Pearland, we don't have a lot of pre-1940s housing stock. So our allocation is going to be based on that Formula A component. Just to give you an idea of what the very small mistake looks like, HUD originally indicated that our allocation for FY '21, which is HUD FY '20, would be $428,160 when it's actually $428,094, difference of $66. Very small. The '22 original allocation was sent to us to be $455,947. HUD came back later and has corrected that amount to $462,666. Again, very small dollar amounts. But if you think about how this is uniformly applied across the country, there's some larger cities with multimillion dollar allocations that this could require them to take major corrective action steps. So we have to follow suit and do what the regulations require, which is to address this through our citizen involvement and public participation process. So here we are today with our public hearing, just indicating that is the case and our action plans have been submitted in accordance with those dollar amounts. We just did not get the chance to take this to the public via the required public notice, which we reposted on 10/13. Because of HUD's mistake, they issued an across-the-board waiver nationwide that allowed entitlements to correct this action with a three-day public comment period. We had the ability to go a little bit further, so we did a nine-day period from 10/14 until last Friday. And this docketed public hearing also provides an opportunity for public comment. So when the mayor calls a question, if there's anyone that has a comment related to the program, they can come to the podium and and speak on it. And we'll resubmit our action plans tomorrow, including any public comments that come out tonight. And just to give you an idea of what those details as far as changes look like, the original plan column provided for the 428160, we corrected that with 428094. And we basically took a few dollars away from the NAP Center expansion project. Nothing major. Just the 66 bucks that went along with that change. A little bit more substantial of a change, the original plan for the FY '22 called for us to spend $455,947. We got the new notice and actually council via a motion to the agenda item that it considered for this action plan, made that change. So the resolution reflects this accurate dollar amount. But the corrected spending is going to be for the $462,666. And staff merely conducted a prorata allocation of that difference based on the percentages of the different initial spending elements across the board. So everybody got a fair share of the difference, if you will. Some other changes that just generally go along with the change from one year to another. '21 local income limits will change, probably due to COVID. The FY '22 goes down a little bit. So '21, I think, for a four-member household, the top end of that is 78.5. And in '22, that turns into 77.3, I believe. And this is HUD scaling. It provides for an across-the-board idea of what up to an eight-member household would be allowed to benefit from a CDBG allocation of funds. FY '21, our target area looked like this. This is the low to moderate income areas of town based on census data. So as Mr. Upton spoke about earlier, this is where we find difficulty sometimes in producing area benefit projects. It's going to get a little bit more difficult in '22 because as the pop-out shows, the old target area, the pink shaded areas on the map, the larger map, show where our target area is going to be for FY '22. I would ignore those areas to the south because many, many of them don't have the, we haven't disaggregated the multi-jurisdictional components yet. We'll do that as we get further along in the process. But for the most part, we try to stick to that area that's just south of the Beltway, south of Brookside Village, between Cullen, north of 518 and west of I-30, State Highway 35. south of Brookside Village, between Cullen, north of 518, and west of State Highway 35. So next steps, tomorrow, as I said, with any comments that come out of the discussion tonight, we will resubmit this plan, these plans rather, both plans, back to HUD. They're already loaded up in the system and ready to go. We just needed this action tonight to move forward with proof that we've taken the corrective steps HUD's required. We should get approval from HUD within the next two weeks and get a grant agreement with the city by mid-November. And with that said, I'll answer any questions and open the door for Council and Mayor to conduct.
Yeah, we'll get to the questions and answers soon as I call for the pub, after we call for the public, and we can answer any questions they may have. Moving forward with the public hearing, we'll now call for any citizens who would like to make comment towards either one of these two years or the plan that has been presented. Can go to the podium, name and address, and speak out on that. We'll do a second call for any citizen wishing to speak on our CDBG grant funding. And then third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for these grants or against these grants or any of the proposed projects. Seeing none, we will move forward to questions, comments, concerns from City Council.
Mr. Hardy, really briefly, everybody that was in our previous process, they're rolling over into this new application, correct?
Correct. Nothing's changed as far as the sub-receipients or any of the allocations, and some minor adjustments on the dollar amounts. We intend to fund it as we originally presented the council and the public.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joel, I guess they just need more signatories, right? So it's all over again. So with that, we will close this public hearing at this time. Thank you, Joel, for all the work that you do on putting this together. We look forward to completing these.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, item number seven, public hearing number two. I'll read, public hearings, a request by Eddie E. Aguero, applicant, I'm sure I butchered that, on behalf of Mohammed Yula, owner, for an approval of conditional use permit, CUP for cigars, tobacco, and e-cigarette shop, use within the general commercial district, approximately, let's see, 5740 Broadway, Suite 112. With that, we'll open this public hearing and ask staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So we will be passing this over to Mohammed Brema. Before I get into passing that on, though, I do want to state that there was an error in the staff packet. The applicant's packet got uploaded incorrectly, but it does not change the resolution or the item publication, so it is capable to move forward on with tonight. With that, I'll hand it over to Mohammed to discuss the staff report.
Thank you, Martin, and thank you, Mayor. This is, this request is for approval of a conditional use permit for cigars, tobacco, and/or CE cigarette shop, retail only use within the general commercial zoning district, accommodate a cigar shop inside a lease space within a multi-tenant retail center on approximately 1.29, two acres of land located at 5740 Broadway Street. That is the southeast corner of Broadway Street and Wagon Trail Road. The applicant proposes to establish a cigar shop within a lease space, including allowance to educate customers on products and services. The applicant had indicated that the shop will be done in compliance, in full compliance with the city's smoking ordinance, and staff did not receive any verbal or written comments regarding this request. Subject property is designated as business commercial on the future land use plan. This site plan shows the general location of the shop within the existing retail center, and you can see it's in the back building that fronts on Broadway Street. I have a couple of views of this existing building and where this cigar shop will locate. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on their regular meeting on October 4th, and their input and discussion was recommendation. Basically, they were all in favor of the request without attaching any conditions with the recommendation, and that concludes the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mohammed. We'll move forward to the applicants present. And at this time, it's up to you whether you want to do an applicant report or an applicant presentation, or if the staff's presentation is what you want, then you can say that as well. It's up to you. So all good there? All right. So we'll then move to the public part of this. So those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give your name and address, and speak out on it. Second request, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. There you go, ma'am. Just give your name and address for the record. Appreciate it.
Thank you. My name's Ramona Trevino, and I live at 1122 Bobby Street in Pearland, Texas. And I felt compelled to speak on their behalf because, for one, the language barrier, and for two, the family is local. They have a son that went through Dawson and a daughter that's at Salvatore. I wanted to make sure that, you know, that was known that they're locally here and in our community since 2015. The other is that I went in not knowing what, exactly what was, I saw their sign, and went in, and they have a really unique culture from Cuba. They are from Cuba, they're immigrants from Cuba, and I was served a little cup of Cuban coffee, which made me think of Havana, we don't have that here. There's not a lot of diversity that I've seen. I've lived here since 2006, and I think it's really important that we understand that they're not CPD, vape, this type of shop. It's stylish, it's elegant, cigars are imported, and it's, I just think it's going to be really great for Pearland. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Continuing on, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Then we'll do third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Norma McVicker. My home address is 4423 Ravine Drive, my house is at 77546. I'm here to support Eddie, and I believe it's going to be a good thing for the city of Pearland to have a classic cigar shop, the way he's planning to set it up. There's nothing like that around here. And, you know, you really need to see it, to believe it. It's going to be nice for the city of, and I hope you give him the opportunity to open this shop. It's going to be good for the city of Pearland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. And I'll do one last final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will move forward to City Council for your questions, comments, and concerns. See any? Member Orlando?
No issues with this at all. Appreciate the presentation and clarification, especially with kind of the mix-up that was alluded to. Just wanted to get clarification from staff on the second, the unrelated shop that was included in our packet, if we knew when that was going to come before the council for consideration. Obviously, not tonight, but.
That will be on council's agenda on November 8th.
November 8th, got it. So for the one that's presented tonight, thank you guys for being here. I think this is something that I haven't really seen in the city of Pearland, and so I'll be voting for it and would like to come and check you guys out once it's done. So thanks.
You have other questions, comments? Member Cam Carr?
Can the applicant come to the podium? I have a couple of quick questions I just like clarification on. All right, just in the, under the hearing, there's a mention of the e-cigarette shop. I just want to make, want to get clarification. You're not selling a vape here.
No, sir.
And on your application, you are a consultant, aren't putting that you're selling a vape?
No. It's going to be just the classic, only hand roasted.
All right, great, and.
The smoking aspect.
The lighter and things.
The stapled windows.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I think we're starting to see too many vape shops come here, people who are not, they don't care about something classy, they're not trying to add value, they're just trying to sell a vape hit. We had, I think, in the last six months, 24 hours, all on Christmas, Thanksgiving, any time of the day, and I don't think that's the community that we want. And so I just want clarification. It's on your hearing as e-cigarette shops, but I want to give you guys a chance to say we're not doing that. And in that case, I'm going to be supportive. It sounds like this is a small business, people are trying to use this as an opportunity to make their lives better and are willing to put their capital out there. I'm a good capitalist, and I support you and hope you do well. I hope we have a tour to your facility when you're up and running so we can make sure that everything is on the up and up.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you so much.
Member Cam Carr?
If I may, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the issue that you brought up was discussed. The notice would allow, because of the land use classification, it would allow for e-cigarettes and vape shops to be operated there. If you did not want vape shops or e-cigarettes to be sold there, we would expect you to make, or somebody on council and with their support, a limitation for tobacco and cigar shop only and to exclude e-cigarettes or vape products from this location.
I don't think the applicant would have a problem with that. Is that correct?
That was something that the applicant also said that they did not have an issue with, in fact, they wanted it known that they were not doing vape and e-cigarette. The CUP would allow it unless you exclude, unless City Council excludes it. So if that was important to you, we would expect for you to make an appropriate motion indicating the same.
To the chair, I don't have the floor, but I'd like to make a motion to amend after we hear the rest, so just.
Yeah, when we, yeah, when we get to the new business item next, well, that's when we'll, outside of the public hearing, we'll get that. Any others? Questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we will close this doctored public hearing and move into new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table, please? And do we, we place it on the table? Can we go ahead and place it on a table with that amendment?
You could place it on the table with the amendment if you so desire and reduce the number of times you have to vote.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2021-CUP 21-00030, with further language to limit, limit to cigar and tobacco only with no vape and no e-cigarettes. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No real staff report, just want to make sure that we clarify we are cigars, tobacco only, no vape, no e-cigarettes. The applicants are certainly aware of that and are supportive of that. Any other questions or comments from council? Nope, don't see or hearing anybody. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-CUP 21-00030 to limit the CUP to cigars and tobacco only.
Perfect, thank you. All right, well, well, we amended it so we don't have to vote on it twice. It was one amendment, got it. All right, just making sure. Moving forward, we have the consent agenda. I have been asked to pull item I as in igloo and O as in Oscar. Any others to be pulled? Seeing or hearing none, Mr. Cam Carr, would you place consent agenda on the table, items A through O with the exception of I and O?
Consideration possible action on the consent agenda, the exceptions of items I as in igloo and O as in omega, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
I'm sorry, I was, I was checking something there. Do we remove O? Yes, okay, yeah, I.
Member Cam Carr? I'm sorry, Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt consent agenda items A through O with the exception of consent items I and O.
And just real quick, we normally take I and O, would be moved to the, to the end, but since I is dealing with one of our architects, is someone from Joyner here tonight? Okay, with council concurrence, I'd like to move that one to the front just because he, we have a consultant here.
No objection.
Rather than to the end, no objection, we'll move that one forward, okay. And we have a member that wants to abstain from that, but before we, you want to go ahead and speak to that?
Yeah, Mayor, since the consultant is a member that, or is a company that I do business with, I think it's fair to the public that I recuse myself from the vote.
Very, very fair. Mr. Little, would you place I on the table, please?
Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2021-234, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of our budget CIP, you've seen, we've got an opportunity to repurpose the existing building on Cullen, our public safety building, space that was used for weight room and Missouri County Tax Office, and also reconfigure for safety improvements, the lower level. We, with the new fire station number four and training center, those spaces can be occupied, so we need professional services to do the rework of that existing space properly, and so this contract with Joyner allows us to move forward on that. Nothing to add.
All right, good things happening out there. So moving forward, any other questions, comments? Member Owens?
Yeah, I got, even though this is a small contract, Joyner, you're doing the design on it and going out for construction, who's doing the inspection on it?
Councilman Owens, as with that, would be looking at our internal staff and also our building officials as well to help us through that since it is an interior modification.
Okay, because the way it looked at Joyner, we're doing the inspection also, which I don't agree with, but if we're, staff's doing it, that's fine. Appreciate you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Raptor, are we anticipating any scope creep, or do we have a very defined? I know we've got about 10 different items, a lot of it interior, but because this is all paid, I have certificates of obligation, i.e. the company credit card, city credit card, we have a very defined.
Yes, sir, that's been vetted through both our allies at the police department who know their scope, also making sure our, everything's vetted out with our architect and labeled out with our scope, yes.
All right, when was the pricing taken on, on what the alternate project is going to be, or do we have 2021 pricing? Or, because I know some of these projects go in the CIP and they kind of sit there for years on end.
So this was looked at at mid-year, if I recall correctly, as well, and taking a look to add in with the renovation of the Police Academy on Old Fire Station Four, so we added the time and tried to make our numbers current with what was going on in the market. Can't control everything, but that was done about.
Agreed, I just.
Ten, eight to ten, eight to 10 months ago.
Material is moving and the cost of that, and I'm aware of it, I just, I just want to make sure that we're working off the latest and greatest. It sounds like you have a very defined scope here, but we do have to watch out for the taxpayer, and I hope we get this done quickly and efficiently and hopefully under budget.
Good question, good question. Any other questions, comments? All good. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-234.
Just want to make sure the record does reflect. Just want to make sure the record does reflect that Member Perez did his thing.
That's correct.
So without, since we took that one up, without any objection, we'll go ahead and place item O on the table for discussion. Is that okay? Okay. Member Perez, would you place it on the table, please?
Happily, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1607. So moved.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
As we've discussed a couple times, this is an ordinance that would codify requirement for registration of, that would be particularly towards short-term rentals. Such a process will enable us to then work with a third party for collection of the hotel motel occupancy taxes that are due to the city. And so we will, as was suggested last time, segregate those new monies, if you will, and that'll be available for council programming as part of the CVB process going forward, but nothing to add.
All right, good thing. And I, Member Orlando asked for this to be pulled, so I'll defer to you first.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So pulling to offer a friendly amendment, so this is going to kick off the process for our staff to begin working with an outside vendor to, first of all, create this registry, but then also collect hot taxes. So I, I think as everyone in staff and CVB is probably well aware, there's a lot more work ahead here to actually implement this. And unfortunately, with the inability of Airbnb and some of the other SDR companies to directly add this, the hot tax surcharge directly to bills that it sends to its clients, I think there's going to have to be some level of calculating what that is and backing into that. And so my amendment was only that, you know, we're tonight authorizing the, the registry and that we kick off this process to begin collecting the hot taxes. My friendly amendment is only that before we actually begin collecting those hot taxes, that we, after the, the work is completed with our CVB and with the outside firm that we're working with, that that just be presented, what the methodology is for collecting those taxes, because as has been discussed, we're going to send folks a bill, and if you don't pay it, that there's pretty significant consequences for not paying your taxes. So if we can just be sure that that calculation is something that we can feel comfortable with as a body, suspect we will, but just before I start collecting those taxes, I think if we could get a presentation on that and a final approval, that, I, I think that would be fair to the citizens and to the council.
So you, you offered that as amendment?
So I, I didn't, yeah, say, but so happy to take any questions or discussion, but my, when we, unless anyone has any friendly changes there, I would just offer, yeah, before we begin collection of, of any hot taxes, that the process by which we're calculating what the hot taxes are owed and how we're working with the outside firm to calculate that, that that just be presented for a final approval by the council.
Point of inquiry, what is the amendment on the floor, then?
It would be that before any hot taxes can be collected under this process, that the means for calculating those taxes and the process for going about that would be presented to the council for final approval. So I guess the amendment is, before we start collecting the taxes, there's a presentation and a final approval of the process.
Is it possible that we could just use as part of the recommendation to the SDR committee, have them include that as part of their recommendations and a part of their presentation, and keep all of that information into one presentation?
If, if those are on the same day or back-to-back or something, I, I think that's fine. I'm fine with that. I, I think this is a little bit of a different question that would probably be outside of the purview of that committee in terms of, this is legit, I'm, I'm thinking more mechanically, how are we calculating someone's tax burden? How do we know exactly how much is being, what, what the room rate is, what discounts are applicable? I, I think there's actually a lot that goes into that. Probably going to be some kind of formula. I don't think that's something in terms of parking and nuisance and everything that's going to be covered by that committee per se. I think that's really something that the CVB and the outside consultant are going to have to speak to. If we want to do those like at the same time for ease, absolutely, but I, I think they're two kind of separate issues. And just before we start sending out these tax bills, I, I feel comfortable if they're, we make sure they're right.
Councilmember, could I get a clarification? Because I, I think I, I see where you're, where you're going with this. And so maybe rather than an official amendment to this, but possibly build just as part of the motion, a contingency before we start collecting, that it, that there be a presentation to council on that?
We'd say a presentation, but that I, I would just want us to be able to sign off on that process, the methodology.
Correct. And so, so would you want to propose passing this with that contingency, as opposed to actually building something like that into the actual ordinance itself?
Comfortable with that.
Okay.
Point of inquiry, can we just clean up the language then, like prior to, I, I just, I understand where he's going. We have, as a community knows, sent out bills without necessarily knowing what we're supposed to be billing, and that didn't go so well. And so I think we should learn our lessons and maybe prior to us deciding to go send out bills to short-term rental. So prior to just...
Yeah, I, and I guess...
We don't.
From the, from my position, we, we've got an amendment, but I haven't heard anybody second or leaning that direction. I don't know if anybody's willing to. But then I'm, because then what I'm going to ask is if the city attorney could, could offer, because I think we're, I think you know where he's trying to head, correct? Just try to offer a good...
I think, I think so, based on his, once I clarified, and then I think he acknowledged...
I'll provide the second.
Just that way, I just want to make sure. And Mr. Pearson's got a question, I think.
So if I could, maybe Tracy can weigh in, but I'm a little, I was a little unclear. I mean, I, I understand the contingency better than quote-unquote that amendment, because our role is required with the registration, and then we would work with this. The calculation itself, per se, would be just the 7% of the rate. So, but Tracy, maybe you can better unexplain that on how that works, or? We, we don't send out the bill either, right? That's part of this whole work?
So the, the star owner will be completing their registration online, and there will be a workflow where they'll be entering that information based on, um, formula that's part of the online process. But it is based on the 7% that we're collecting off of the room rate that the star owner mandates. I mean, they set their own room rates. So it is somewhat seamless. It's 7% of whatever their rate is.
So it's 7% of what they enter into it. So when you say star, you mean short-term rentals?
Yes.
And, and I guess, to be clear, like, how do we know what the room rate is?
That's what they report themselves, just like a hotel would say, our roommate is X, so.
So I guess that's why, so it's just self-reported, it's kind of on our system in a way?
Well, it's also what the, in the process, when we are verifying or through that software system, it's verifying what is being advertised on various websites.
Right. So there's that verification of their advertising for X, and that's part of their process.
So I, and, and I think, I, I'm looking at a presentation now that was attached as part of this packet. It's kind of a overview of some sample input screens and whatever. I guess I'm just saying, before we actually start collecting these bills, I, I would just like a presentation on that and a final, kind of a council buy-in of, okay, this is how we're doing it, this is how we're verifying it. And if, if we want to put that in as a contingency, I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. Comfortable with everything moving forward. I just want, before we are, start collecting the taxes, just to have a, a good understanding up here of, of the process we're using to do that.
Yeah, however council wants that. If you want that as a presentation, workshop, whatever, that's...
No, I, we don't need another workshop. It's, I just, I, it's really an easy thing. I, I, I think there's more, what we're saying here is we want to create this registry and start this process. Frankly, like, I, I think there's kind of, this is going to kick off a lot more stuff, a lot more development, a lot more discussions. When those discussions are concluded, I just kind of want to get up, have a final sign-off by the members of the body. That's, that's really all it is.
I was just going to ask for Tracy, and, and actually, I'm glad y'all brought this up, because it's, it's about process after, you know, what's next, what happens next? This gets passed and approved, what happens next? And I was actually going to bring the question up, because the mayor pro tem had, had told me before the last meeting, he, he wanted to ask this question, and it's really about the process. So Tracy, share with us, and this may help clarify exactly kind of what goes on, but assuming this is approved tonight, as is, let, let's not take the amendment for just a second. What happens next?
We'll move into formalizing an actual agreement with Lodging Revs, who is our recommended vendor and owns the cloud-based software system. Once that contract is agreed to by both sides, we'll move into a process which looks like a 10-week process to create the workflow that's customized for our needs. And that's going to involve input from several departments, several staff liaisons within the city to develop that workflow process. So at the conclusion of that, we would be able to provide an update if council desires on what that's going to look like before we actually launch communications with short-term rental property owners.
Okay, so then...
That's exactly it.
So then at that point, so when and how, we understand there, you have hoteliers who, somebody comes in, they get a room for the night of the weekend, they pay for it, the hotelier collects the 7%, that goes to the state. We get that money back here, what is it, two months or so later, whenever it comes back into the city. How does it work with the short-term rentals? And I think, I think that's what y'all are getting to, is how does a bill go out, or how does a short-term rental owner pay the city if it's not collected through a online registration portal with whatever situation that they rent the room? How, how, what happens, how does the short-term rental know and to pay, not just pay, but how do they remit payment? It doesn't go to the state, or does it?
So if I could clarify, our hoteliers remit payment to us on a quarterly basis. And they pay to the state, I believe, on a monthly basis, the percentage that's owed to the state. So what we would be offering with this new platform is for a short-term rental property owner to either pay online or to pay in person or whatnot, but the ease of convenience is an online option. And that, we would put them on a quarterly schedule as well. So from the effective date of when the resolution is in place versus when our process is ready to go and launch, we would determine what those quarterly payment amounts are so that they're in sync with what our hoteliers are already submitting.
Okay.
So, yeah, if, if I may, what we're saying tonight is we're giving the permission to kick off this process, to, to make the registry and start collecting the hot tax. They're going to go, they're going to embark upon this 10-week exercise with this entity to work out the details. My proposal is just, once we work out the details, share them with the council, have a final vote. That's, that's what it is.
So if I could, I think...
And that's why I was trying to get that clarification, of when in this process you're, you're asking for.
Right. I think I would suggest Mr. Coker's suggestion for a contingency, then, that it doesn't change the resolution that we have that contingency, we get this process going, as Tracy outlined, and come back to y'all and have a, for our workshop on that.
Just a presentation, final vote, but I'm good with it.
And so, we have a, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a, and a second on the table. I don't know that I want to restate it, because I'll probably get it wrong. Mr. Coker, would you restate it?
I'll just clarify what I believe it to be, is that the, the, the motion is still to go ahead and move forward with the item as presented this evening, with the contingency that before we implement the process, that we actually come back to the council with a presentation on the methodology, so it can be presented to the council for clarification and understanding.
Can we make that item for consideration or approval?
Say that again?
Can we make that item for consideration or approval? Because when you read through the, the document, there's just a lot of variables, and we want to explain this, and they're, they're talking about this. I just, that we have to approve that, because I think we're not going to be involved in a 10-week process, just that it's explained and we approve it.
So what they're asking for, Mr. Coker, I, I believe, and I'll, please clarify if I get this wrong, I want to make sure I, I understand it, is once somewhere in this eight, 10-week process, this, the methodology and everything else about how the SDR is going to pay the city or their rentals, that that process come back in the form of a presentation to the city and that we, the council, approve...
The final output.
The final output.
Yep.
That's what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay, was that part of the original, your original motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, okay, so that's clearer for the record. So that was the motion and the second.
And that was the second?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's what you asked for.
Good to go.
So that was the amendment to the original motion. Now, any other questions, comments about that amendment from council? Okay. So with that, Madam Secretary, we're, we're voting on the amendment first.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
Okay, so now we're with an amended motion on the table. I don't think there's any questions or comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're voting on the amended, uh, motion as amended.
Right. Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion, um, sorry, Member Little. I forget, Member Little. The motion carries six to zero to adopt the second and final reading of ordinance number 1607 as amended.
All right, good stuff, guys. Thank you. We'll move on to new business item number three. We have a presentation and discussion around our 2021 biannual community survey. Josh, I'll kick it to you.
I'll, I'll just introduce real quickly. We undertake a community survey every other year that helps us in providing a yardstick and guidance for some of our work in terms of prioritizations during budgets and other programs. We've done that with the National Research Center. They've been acquired by or work now with Polco, but it's the same principles that are, are people and process that's been involved. So we've got some year-over-year examples. And Representative from Polco is here to make the presentation for council. You've got the report in your packets, but turn it over to him now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff. My name is Nick Masternardi. Honored to be here with you to present your city's survey results. And I'm from Polco and National Research Center, down visiting you from Middleton, Wisconsin. Just a real brief introduction to the company. Polco is a civic communication technology company. We did acquire and we continue to operate with the same rigor that has always existed, the National Research Center. Kind of can be thought of as our in-house team of professional survey scientists and data scientists who help you make sure that you get statistically significant, representative, high-quality results, community input, so you can feel confident, can serve as the starting point or the backbone of your operations moving forward. I'll, I'll give you a little bit of background on the, the rigor and the methodology. I just introduced myself. I'm a former public servant. Count myself very lucky to get to work in this area with you. The mission of our organization is to help bring communities together with better communications, high-quality input, and to give you data to help you guys operate your community and make great decisions going forward. So our flagship product for community engagement is the National Community Survey. I'll spend a couple moments here. This is a city surveying instrument that's been around for about 25 years. It was developed by professional survey scientists who assess quality of life in communities and resident satisfaction with public services along these 10 areas that you can see on that bottom left there. It has been conducted in over 500 cities, all for comparison points of view. So you'll see in the presentation of the results, not only your guys' results, and we can talk about trends over time, because you guys have been consistent in repeating this, so you can follow progress. We'll also discuss a little bit of benchmarking comparisons about how the, how the community, how the city of Perilin ranks compared to some of the other cities we work with. Ahead of, just as a caveat, before we look at those comparisons, we are fortunate to get to work with literally the best cities and counties all across the country. And so these 500 that you're compared to with the benchmarking results are the Honolulu's, the Palo Alto's, Coronado's, Scottsdale, Arizona's, McKinney, Texas, just, just the best. So if you, when you see something that's comparable to benchmark, you know, similar to benchmark, that is similar to benchmark among the very best top-performing cities and counties all across the country. So just keep that in mind. Our goal is, with these results, you can assess government performance, you can monitor trends, understand these benchmark comparisons, and hopefully they'll inform budget, land use, and strategic plans. This survey was conducted from May 7th through June 25th of this year. We do, there's a couple of different methodologies, just so you understand. We do, probably what you're most familiar with is we draw a random representative sample from your community, and do we do multiple modes of outreach? I think actually the city selected even a higher level to maximize participation and uptake and participation from the community. We also avail a, what's called a non-probability open participation component to the survey, where we leave it out for anybody in the community to participate, allow them to also have a voice. So we do both methods. We're conscious in the open participation component. You can acquire a little bit of a selection bias. We do corrections and blending is appropriate, but the results that we're sharing with you are the scientific, statistically significant, reweighted representative result. Our goal in, in sharing that is, we want you guys to take these results and have confidence. And we know over the course of the year, you can hear from a lot of, you know, squeaky wheels and so forth. wheels and so forth, this is a scientific rigorous assessment of the community that you guys can always come back to and assess and measure progress against. The results that you guys were able to achieve with the response rates that you guys received, and that's, response rates in the industry overall have been going down, but it may seem, 403 may sound like a low number, it's actually not. Oftentimes to have a scientific set of results in a community, even for large ones, can be on around 290, 300 responses. So the results that you guys generally, generated, and just, I was a statistics and economics, so I'm going too long, I used to teach this at the Air Force Academy, let me, just cut me off. The biggest thing is I want you guys to know that these results reached a 95% confidence interval with a plus or minus 5% margin of error. So if on some area, if we're talking about roads or parks, and you see a resident satisfaction level, call it 83%, you can do plus or minus 5 from that 83, and you can feel with 95% confidence that the population sentiment falls within that range. So you should feel, you know, quite confident in these center results, quite good. So I'll just jump into it, there's a lot of data here, I highly recommend, you know, look at the trend lines and the breakdowns on the trend lines, it's really great stuff in there, and happy to follow up in additional detail. I'm gonna just hit some of the highlights here, jump in with questions, concerns you may have, and before I go too far, I want to make sure I give credit to the team, there's a couple of my teammates who actually conducted the survey, they helped make sure the mailers went out, did all the reweightings, the analysis and the reporting, Jade Rocha from our team, and Renee Ford are who did the bulk of the work, I'm just here to kind of present the results with you as well. So overview of the survey results, we wanted to hit, these are kind of the high-level key questions in the survey. Overall feelings of safety in Perilin, 83%. Economic health, 83%. Overall quality of parks, 76. So all of these are, are quite, again, the, the benchmarking comparison group that you guys are going up against are literally the best cities and counties across the country. You'll notice the similar there on the right, that means you are within, similar to benchmark among these very top-performing communities. The one at the bottom is the overall quality of the transportation system in Perilin, this is an opportunity for improvement. We can dive in a little bit more, we'll have a little bit more detail on that slightly later in the presentation. One thing I will mention is, it's very interesting, it's a good thing that this, the consistency in your trend lines, because it is, it's actually, some of the steps you guys are taking are inducing progress. So that is lower than benchmark against that, those, your communities, but it has been trending up, so. Also, how important, the first ones, the last, these were assessing the quality, this is assessing the importance to the community, you'll see in the next slide, we put those together to try to assess the things that are important to the community, you want to make sure those are the things that are going extremely well, the things that might be slightly less important to the community, those are the things that, you know, if we look, we, we can perhaps de-emphasize slightly. But as far as what's most important to your community, you can see quality of utility, infrastructure, feelings of safety, economic health, these are the top performers of importance in your community. Again, the desires of your community are very similar to the benchmarking comparisons of your peer communities. I wanted to point out is the, your, your citizens' assessment of the importance of parks and recreation opportunities is higher than most, most of these high-performing, so that's, that's something of importance in your city. So again, obviously I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch over, well, you can see it a little better here, and then I'll, I'll bounce over. When we put together, like, if I could combine all of these 100 questions, and all this data points, and all the demographics and the cross tabs into one small, one chart, this is it. This is a comparison of what's important to the city, and against the quality that they feel that it's being delivered. Everything is kind of split, so there's, you know, half and half, left to the right. This is not necessarily saying that the, that the quality is, is, the way I read it is the top right is that the quality is commensurate with the importance, and the bottom left, the quality is commensurate with the importance. You'll see it on the, on the next chart with the benchmarking comparisons drawn in. The way that I, I like to read this chart is, what's on the bottom right, the importance is relatively low, but the quality is really high. So these are areas that if you needed to, resources are scarce, you, you could afford to slightly de-emphasize, that's what's in the bottom right quadrant, and the items in the top-left quadrant, these are the ones that, the quality is a little lower, but the importance is really high. So the importance relative to the quality suggests that if you wanted to shift resources, this is an area that the, the bottom right could be shifted emphasis to the top left. Yep.
Really quickly, what does utilities mean? Is there a broad definition with the way you, you worded in your survey? What is that?
It's, it's, uh, basically the utility, cable and water and the, the normal utilities that are-
Oh, so all of them, water, sewer, cable, phone, TV, all of that kind of rolled into one?
Yes, sir, that's, yeah, generally what's referred to there. I will highlight, the utilities is one worthy of, and I'm not sure which one in there might be the source, but you, there is a breakdown in the results on that, and there was one that kind of caught your attention.
So, so deeper into the data-
That's right.
-that's broken out a little bit?
Yep, each of these is broken in about 10 different, 10 different areas.
And the, the only question I had, as you're going through this, I wanted to ask, and that's on education, arts, and culture. So when, when I see, I think, the, the previous one, that the quality, education, arts, and culture is low, are they talking about our ISD education? What are, what is overall opportunities for education, culture, and arts? How's that question asked and answered? Because our ISDs here are typically some of the best in the, in the area, if not the state. So I'm, I'm puzzled with education being in that.
Yes. So one thing to point out, it is rated lower than the other items here, but relative to other cities and counties across the country, that some of those best ones, it is similar to benchmark. So that, I, I wouldn't read that as it's, it's low.
If I may, I think on, you know, for example, one of the cross tabs, K through 12 education, it looks like we're looking at something like a 92% favorability, so I think maybe that's more in the lacking of cultural and like stuff to do versus-
Arts and culture, okay. That's fair.
Yep. These are aggregates, and each one of these topics has about 10 different breakdowns in it, and we'll go into a little, I won't hit it with all of it, but yeah, there is, there's a breakdown on that. I don't, do we, just protocol for the city, questions out, do we, I'll defer to the mayor and council on how to handle. There's a question out of the audience.
Yeah, problem is, we can't have, legally, we can't have that kind of dialogue.
Gotcha.
That's the issue. We're more than happy to answer a question, Tom, but we've got to have, you know, signed up speaking and all that. Appreciate it.
So this, again, trying to condense a whole bunch of data into one, this is, this is the graph where we kind of say, at a high level, maybe you can afford to de-emphasize items in the bottom-right quadrant a little bit, to, to increase emphasis on items in the top-left. But again, if I put this in a chart, that kind of calls out the commensurate levels of quality and importance, you'll see, really, all of them are not falling in the areas desperately in need of de-emphasis or desperately in the need of re-emphasis. Perhaps maybe the transportation item, which as you're seeing is kind of in that top-left bubble area, might be worthy, and again, it's been trending up, but continue to, to work on it as you guys have. Okay, so again, high level, we'll dig in a little bit here, but the comparisons to the national benchmarks, there were 12 that were more negative ratings. Again, I'd take it with a grain of salt, you guys are going up against the top 500 cities and counties across the country. 102 are similar, so similar to that group is quite good, and there was eight that received more positive than that elite benchmarking group. So we'll start in the area of governance, six of 10, and so, again, if you don't see anything in here that's saying this is similar to benchmark, but six in 10 respondents, so if your, your citizens rated the overall confidence in Perilin government is excellent or good, and you'll see that fair is pretty high, too. So you're basically, if you include hot, air as well, you're at 85% of citizens in your community are, have overall confidence in the Perilin government. 71% of residents rated the quality of services provided by Perilin is excellent or good. Again, similar to benchmark with that elite group. These, and these are some of the, in the governments category, just how we talked, those, all those, there's, you know, like, these 10 different breakdowns, 73% by customer service by your Perilin employees, residents with respect, all residents fairly, and so forth, these are all similar to benchmark. This one, I'm gonna read everything on here, this is kind of a, a call-out to where your residents, your citizens expressed that they are receiving their information in the city. One that is extremely high relative to what we see normally is the city website. So if you'll notice, in this, 92% of the residents in your city are receiving information from your website, it's one of the highest sources that we've seen out of this, so it's, it's well-traveled, it's well-promoted, information goes out and pretty, is effectively communicated out in that one. But I, I think for, for you guys, for council and staff, this is a helpful way to know where your residents are getting their input from. Okay, quality of life in Perilin, eight in 10 respondents rated that the overall quality of life is excellent or good. So again, very strong, and this is similar to benchmark across the, across the country. 90% rated Perilin as a place to live as excellent or good, and 79% to the overall image, positive marks to the overall image and reputation of the city. 86% recommended living in Perilin to someone who asks, and 84% of residents plan on remaining in Perilin for the next five years. All right, jumping into mobility, again, this is kind of some of the areas for, for breakdown, so you can continue to make sure if you're focusing on this for improvement, areas you can continue to improve. So three in 10 rated the overall transportation, transportation system as excellent or good. Five in 10, traffic enforcement, traffic signal timing, street repair, so all of these areas, again, these are similar to benchmark, and so these are, you know, this is not necessarily a call-out, major areas for improvement in this area. These, some of these are lower than national benchmarks, so if, within mobility specifically, an area to, to, you know, to continue to focus is ease of walking, traffic flow on major streets, ease of travel by bicycle, and then travel by, by public transit was quite a bit lower than, than benchmark. So these particular areas are, are what kind of the residents came back, came back with. Safety in Perilin, this is a shining spot, eight in 10 rated the overall safety in Perilin is excellent or good. All similar to benchmark here, neighborhood during the day, downtown commercial areas during the day, safety from violent crimes, and safety from property crime. So this is, you know, phenomenal, phenomenal safety assessments in the community. Again, all similar to benchmark, fire services, fire prevention and education, police services, crime prevention, animal control, emergency medical services, all similar national benchmark. And so these are good. Again, in your reports, you, you can look at these results, they've been stable, but the trend lines, you know, sometimes there's slight movements up and down. It's very interesting to watch some of these in light of sort of some of the social justice and race equality movements that are going on, and so it's, it's good to, I, I recommend checking those trend lines, but again, you guys have always been in this similar benchmark and have maintained that position in this most recent iteration. So conclusions, residents appreciate local government, have a strong preference for the type of communication methods that they use to, to learn about Perilin's news and activities, your traffic, your promotion on your city websites extremely strong, the high quality of life in Perilin, great safety, mobility is an area, opportunity for improvement, it has been improving, so some of the initiatives you guys have been rolling out are, seem to be working, and there's specific areas in there highlighted in the report that you could dive in. And yeah, the residents feel, feel very safe in the community. One thing to, to mention, and I'll just come back, so National Research Center is our team of survey scientists and data scientists who administer, reweight, present, and report these results. Polco is the way that it's conducted, and so all of your citizens who respond to both the probability-based sample and the open participation sample kind of become followers or be part of your digital panel of residents, it's just a new part of the architecture, it's not like a one-and-done, like a Survey Monkey, where they take a survey and then they disappear. They are part of your feedback panel available to you, so I just was going to mention that if you want to continue to engage with them, they're out there, you have connectivity with them, if you put new questions out to your community, they will be exposed to them. So we always, I, I kind of like to leave with this concept in mind, the way a lot, we see a lot of cities use these survey results. We view this as kind of the start, you've identified baselines and trends, opportunities for improvement, and things that are working really well. And as you go forward to kind of reduce some of those gaps, you can reach out, I think you have over 400 people in the community who are part of this digital feedback team, this panel that's available to you, it's a great way to crowdsource ideas, what ideas do you have in the community? Might get a lot of ideas, use their input to help down-select, and demonstrate support on new initiatives and agenda items, and then as the year goes on, you can circle back and continue to see great inflections and increases in progress. So I'll just say, you know, it's, you guys have put up, continue to put up new comments and, and surveys and short, short polls to the community about ideas, you share them broadly, website's quite effective, those results all come in and you, you see those, and you kind of build this sustainable panel that's in, out there of over 400 residents and growing. So just, just really good, and happy to share, answer any questions on anything that's in here, the nature of the panel that you've built and trend lines, but I, I think the high-level takeaway is these are excellent results, and really should be proud as the council staff about the progress you're making as a city.
Well, the good news is, we've got a few challenges in front of us, but for the most part, things are, things are, are good. But as always, you know, we have work to do. So with that, council questions, comments?
Yeah, I have just a couple. Thank you so much for that presentation, I know it's a, a lot of ground to cover in a short period of time, and I think you did a good job of hitting the high points. Just the, the last couple of slides that we saw, just some of those dashboards, are, are those available to us as policymakers to be able to kind of view the data in that way? I thought the report did a good job, but some of this looks pretty cool in terms of being able to graphically evaluate this.
Absolutely, and you, I think Josh from your team-
As access, sorry.
As access, yeah, and you, you can kind of see the demographics of the panel that you're building, and he's probably checking out, but you can see age group participation, and try to put questions out there to help attract and make it robust representative panel.
Excellent, yeah, if we could get access to that, Josh, as the council at least, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
And then just a couple of other comments, I, I appreciated what you said about, you know, there's, there's sometimes a few squeaky wheels, and I, I think it's really hard, especially this day and age, where we, we're all on social media, and there's literally an algorithm that, that the people who are most mad, the people who are most dissatisfied with the, with how things are going in your city, those are the things that are literally like boosted up over and over again, and so it's hard to get a sense of how do people actually feel, and, and this being so rigorously done. I, I, I think looking at this, a lot of it strikes me as being true, I, I think there are areas where we declined, where, for example, in the utility billing, where it's kind of obvious why that might have happened since 2019, and there are areas, you know, especially in terms of mobility, where we've made significant investments. And so I, I think this is, my takeaway from this is that we've got a place that we can be very proud of, and, you know, we, we kind of have our, our marching orders for what people are dissatisfied with. The last thing I wanted to say, and I'm, I'm glad you homed in on the same slide that I did, because it was my favorite slide in this, if we could get the two-by-two matrix pulled back up, of the facets of livability. So the, the biggest thing that I wanted to, I guess, put a goalpost down here, or highlight here, you know, the fact that safety and economy are in that top-right quadrant, that they're very important to people, and, and we're doing a good job with them in the city, I mean, those are the meat and potatoes of what makes a good city, having a robust economy and, and people feeling safe in their homes and going out in Perilin. So that, I'm very excited to see that, that's, that's the best thing we could see. The other one I want to call attention to is the, the top-left quadrant. As I was saying, you know, I, I think that all of us up here know, know why utilities is there, or, and we also know why mobility is there, you know, this is a city that's grown by 4X in 20 years, and so we're doing something about both of those, what we've made, we've spent a tremendous amount of time addressing our utility billing situation, we've spent a tremendous amount of money on the mobility situation. I think we've done less on the community design front, and I think going down into the cross tabs, there's really, I, I think there's a lot there in terms of, and I would even bring in, you know, some of the stuff in terms of entertainment and culture, and just what is the look and feel of Perilin, and so I think two of these three, which, let's call them low-quality but high-importance, we're doing a really good job of addressing. I don't think we're doing it as much on the middle element, and I think, at, at least to me, that said, that, that makes me think, you know, I'm, I want to take a deeper dive into that over the next few months, but I, I think that's important to note, that people feel that their very important need is not served there. But again, thank you for, for the presentation, and I look forward to digging into the results online, so.
Did we came for?
Let me pull up the, the packet, I got a bunch of pages on the big, big packet, I just want to ask a couple of questions, so I want to give them some time and filibuster. The first question is, after these great presentations, how often does the city staff get a gigantic raise for doing such a good job? Seems like everything is going really well. Is that common?
We present the results, I'm not sure what, what goes on in the, in the payment afterwards.
I feel like a raise is in order, seems like a lot of good things are happening. So anyways, page 415 on the packet, there's like, or this direct item, I pulled up the bigger packet, let me find it here, if I can help Josh. Under governance-
bigger packet. Let me find it here. Under governance, kind of getting in the cross tabs here, there seemed to be a general decline on some of the categories, and I just wanted some guidance there. But you're comparing against all of these big basket of 500 cities, and then our data and our responses is compared, and then that's why you're saying similar, lower, higher versus the basket of people. That's exactly right. And actually, the number of cities is closer to 1,000. We also go out and scrape other cities who use other, we're the leading provider of statistically significant surveys across the country, but other times, other cities use other providers. We scrape sort of put in to the comparison. So yeah, sometimes it's close. There's a couple that I wanted to flush out here. We can back this up as we go down. What is statistically significant number in this case? Usually, is it four or five points, is it six points? Because on some of these, as you scroll down just a little bit, Josh, we kind of have a negative decline on some of these, the one, the overall direction Pearland's taking from 70 to 65 percent, generally acting in the best interest of the community, 69 to 60. That's nine points, roughly speaking, 1.6, so like 18 percent down. I'm just wondering, when we're comparing that, what becomes the significant zone? Yeah, so I know for this year's results, again, it was a 95 percent confidence level that the, that this year's true population sentiment would have been within five of what you have there. And I didn't double check the last implementation, but I guess it's probably around 95 percent with 5 percent margin of error again. So I think anywhere in the five to 10 is starting to get statistically significant difference. Okay. And then are there any recommendations that are sidecar to this, or is this just literally us surveying and us? Yeah, we, we give the, we conduct the survey and give these reports, but it's ultimately up to the, to the city priorities on, based on the gaps and what you want to address. Can we go to page 420, Josh? The one that struck out to me is sidewalks. Keep scrolling down there. Surprisingly good, increasing, 50 to 58 percent. So kudos to the sidewalk team. I noticed that. We give the sidewalk people a lot of junk. Congratulations to you guys. And then page 432, I think is an area of improvement. I think we talked about this in our strategy meeting in July around the arts. This one struck out to me. That's exactly it. Opportunities to attend cultural arts and music activities. I know we just opened the art gallery, but I'm very much looking forward to spending that CVB money, that $5 million. That's going to be very exciting. We're going to do some more art stuff, I bet. It's going to be great. So just sending that message. I know Member Orlando, we talk about the arts quite a bit, and I think we need to do more, and I think the citizens are saying so. And then can we scroll down just a tad? Opportunities to spend, send special events and festivals. It was up at one point, I guess, I don't know what that second bullet is, is like 2016 or 17. 2015 is the one furthest left. Yeah, so it's somewhere there. But I think we're going to get to do some more festivals in the parks. So I'm getting excited about that. We'll spend all that cash. It's going to be great.
Not to interrupt, I kind of wonder, the opportunities to attend special events and festivals went down lower. Are you seeing that across the country? Because you think that's a reaction to COVID?
Yeah, I have, let me double check, and I can get back to you on that one. We have, I think COVID has certainly impacted, and certainly Black Lives Matter has impacted some of the policing, and that we've also seen public transportation a little bit because of COVID. This is one, I can get back to you on. It's a great question. I appreciate the data. As the member said, I think the cross tabs are really, really interesting in kind of what the people are missing and what we're doing good. Surprisingly, we're good on sidewalks, but we always hear how terrible they are. But the respondents seem to think they're okay. So it's just, that's the intricacies of the data, I guess. So.
Questions, comments?
Well, I'd say 58 percent of the people have a decent sidewalk. The rest of them suck. So it is. Mayor, not to belabor this point, we get these surveys every, every other year. I think it shows a continuing stable trend of Pearland performing at a high level. I would say that we're probably one of the 500 cities that are doing well for a lot of ways. I would say that possibly as part of our ones that I likely won't attend because I won't be on this council after May, but possibly as a guideline, as we get into workshops, where we're talking about budgeting, where we're talking about council, council priorities, I think it's good for us to remind ourselves what this survey says so that we can remind ourselves what our priorities are. No discredit to council members or councils as a whole, but we tend to react to what's in front of us or the latest complaint. It's human nature. It's a little bit of see ball, hit ball, a kind of mentality. And again, nothing wrong with that. We've been productive, working in that way. But, you know, possibly by continuing to put this in front of us and making it one of more, our more important guiding documents to let us know, what are the citizens actually saying? To Member Campar's point, possibly sidewalk repair isn't as high on the list as we anticipated. I mean, I think it is, but, you know, to borrow his argument, maybe we don't need to put as much effort into that as we do need, as we need to put into parks and rec. And when we get into five-year CIP planning, or bond planning, or things of that nature, using this as our guiding document. Because I think in the last, the blast bond referendum, council, not a criticism, but council decided that it wasn't as a higher priority for us to move forward with the phase two of Independence Park. And, you know, in the overall scheme of things, that probably was a good idea at the time, but maybe we would have made the decision if this was put in front of us. So I think to, to direction towards you as the agenda setter, as we get into some of these planning and guiding meetings and workshops and things, possibly a review summary of, here's where our citizens think we are, let that guide us, not let Facebook complaints guide us. That may be more helpful.
Might be a good place to start when we do our, you know, strategic planning, you know, retreat or workshop refresher on this, and then move forward. I like the suggestion. Any other questions, comments? Member Carbone?
Where does drainage or flood fall in to these categories? Would that be under the safety?
I would have said utilities, but it might be under safety.
Yeah, I mean, when I read under, it's fire, flood, or other natural disaster rolling up under safety. So I guess that'll be interesting. I didn't see, you know, flood or drainage as something that we're getting, we're getting hammered on, so it'll be interesting to see how your vote goes on the new tax. And then also, the way I read this is parks are doing great, but it's a low priority, which is surprising. I'm not surprised that they're great, but it being a low, low importance.
Just to clarify on that one, we kind of move it, this next graph is basically the same as the previous one, but based on the benchmarking results, we call out what's in kind of a critical area or recommended area. And so it is among all these areas, more so in the bottom right quadrant, but everything in the bottom right quadrant isn't in a critical area of worthy of deemphasis. So just, just a, just a highlight.
Thank you.
I'd also say SDRs aren't on there either, but we've put a lot of focus on it.
Question real quick, what was the actual date of the respondents?
It was May 7th to June 25th.
Yeah, that, that's also just to kind of note, you know, by the time, and I don't know, you know, this is being done every two years. Is it, is it done about the same time every two years?
We try to get as close to the same time of year to get that seasonality in place. I don't know if there's any, any adjustment for that, to account for that on the, in our seaside.
We do not do a seasonal adjustment.
We're usually within a month or two, one way or the other.
The only reason why I was asking was if we're doing a strategic retreat and strategic planning in, you know, February, March, I'm just, latest and greatest data would be good. And I don't, I don't necessarily say, let's move this to that time of the year. I'm just, I want to make sure that it's as close as we can, but, you know, without the seasonality, it's kind of hard to just uproot this and move, because it would change.
Well, and one suggestion I would make is with the addition of the Polco platform and the online audience that we are building there now, is that we can do a more specific questionnaire to that group right before your strategic retreat, and tease out any further questions you want to have that are tailored specific to that.
I think that would be, I think that would be really good, and it keeps in line with what Member Perez was just talking about, is that bring our focus back to the true survey of people, not a one-off comment somewhere, but just, just really digging into the data, and then that, that being part of what's driving our strategic priorities and then our budget.
And on, on the graphic that we looked at earlier, that kind of shows all of our community plans and everything, we do have this at the top as, you know, a core thing driving, I think to Member Perez's point and your point just now, Mayor, the more that we can kind of make this front and center and just remind us of it, I think that'd be very good. I just had one question that I thought of though with that comment and with Member Carbone's. So either with these kind of supplemental, supplementary surveys that you can do later on in the year, or, you know, next time this comes up in 2023, obviously a lot of these questions have continuity, but I did see some that looked newer. Are we able to, for example, have a specific drainage question the next time around on either one of those? Are we, I guess, what is the flexibility in asking about more community specific questions?
Yes, so when we conduct this multi-mode scientific survey, I think that there is a series of custom questions at the end that you guys utilize. It's about, you know, in a page format, about half a page of questions. So you have a little bit of flexibility there. And, you know, Josh, I'll-
Yeah, so as much as possible, we like to maintain the fidelity year over year to, to keep those trends going. To next point, we do have some of that flexibility in those custom questions. One of the things that we're looking at, so emergency management, generally speaking, you know, is covered in the safety section of this, but it doesn't go into as much depth as we'd like to. So we're actually going to do a completely separate survey with that Polco audience. A lot of it is, how many questions will we want to ask? How in-depth does it go? And how frequently are we asking questions? Because we don't want to burn out that audience.
Sure. Great, appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to make reference to what was said, but we have all this on the website. We've got a hub that's got this and prior surveys. And this year, we added a business survey. So we presented that to the PDC board and also shared that to the council. So that's another resource in the same vein for that community.
Good stuff. All right. Hearing none. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Looks like Southwest got you this time to us. So a couple of weeks ago, wasn't so, wasn't so lucky. So I appreciate your indulging and coming out tonight and for the survey results. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to say, it heartens me well to see, I think, if I could leave with one in part to everybody, it's that, you know, I think it's hard, you often hear, as everybody mentioned, squeaky wheels, and often now that squeaky wheel is digital, and it's easy for folks to do that. And these are sets of results. I, it does me well to hear utilization of these as a guide and light for strategic operations going forward. So it gives credit to what we do, and we appreciate it. If you guys have follow-up questions on any of this deep dives, I've got an action item to get back on. I think it was on the art stuff. Happy to do it. Don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you.
Good stuff. Appreciate it. We'll move on in our agenda. Mr. Rowland, would you place new business item number four on the table, please?
Okay. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-196, so moved.
We have motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. There are actually three items related to this capital improvement project in the spirit of drainage, which has come up several times tonight. This one has been in our program, and that's for retrofitting, if you will, for the Wesley neighborhood, draining improvements, bringing those more up to snuff. We've been working extensively with the residents towards this, and the construction award has finally arrived here to reliance. This item does include a reallocation, some budgetary monies. The project, as has been alluded to, has suffered somewhat from the timing, increased costs, but also in making some of those changes to adapt, you know, and make sure this is in fitting with the neighborhood that has increased the cost to some degree. But we are here tonight with the award and the appropriations that's wrapped up around that. And then there are two other items that go along with this. One is an interlocal with BD4, and then another for the materials testing. But stand by for any questions you might have on the details.
I was going to say four, five, and six were all related. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council?
On the Wesley project, I had a couple of calls over this last week on the tree removals. And I think we got one here at the city. A lady said that they just bought the property there, their home there, and now come to find out their tree was going to be taken down by the city. I don't know, I've had some meetings out there with the people from Wesley or not.
We've had multiple meetings with the residents out there and had out the tree removal plan for probably well over a year, close to two years. And the reason for that is to establish the flow line in those ditches necessary to meet the current drainage standards. We've got to basically dig those ditches out a foot to two foot deeper, and there's, there's trees planted basically on the, in the right of way, on the edge of the right of way that would be impacted by those improvements.
You might want to reach out to that lady.
We have. We've, several of us have spoken to her today, so.
All right. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Member Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. So just help me break down the 395 plus thousand additional funding. Where's that additional revenue? What's generating that necessity for that additional revenue specifically?
Basically where the bids came in.
So our lowest bidder came in that much over the allocation?
That's correct. We, with the final engineer's estimate, I believe, with the current conditions, bidding conditions and material costs, they ramped that up about 30 percent from the previous estimate. And then when, between that point and bids coming in, we were about 10 percent higher than that. And that corresponds with what we've seen materials do over the past couple of months.
Thank you, Trent.
Any other questions, comments?
Real quick, eradication, what is Fund 506? We're diverting to make the, make this whole.
Councilman Campar, Ms. Amy will be looking that up real quick.
I know it's one of our many dedicated funds. I just-
It's a capital fund where there's just, you know, there were expenditures that ran under on other capital projects, so that went to the fund balance. So it's available to allocate to this project.
Ms. Amy, just to keep the meeting going, can I just find out what the official name is after the meeting?
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt Resolution Number R2021-196.
Back to Member Orlando, would you place number five on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-197, so moved.
Motion of second. We've had partial staff report.
Nothing to add. This is the interlocal that I mentioned with BD4.
All right.
Mr. Pearson, or Mayor, if I could just add, we do have representatives from DD4 here tonight, John Gennaro and Lee Blummer, and want to thank them for their partnership on this project. It's really what made it possible. Very difficult area to drain and make those improvements, and so they've been a great partner on this.
Thank you to the Drains District and both of you for being here tonight and your involvement here. Like I said, this is our whole community coming together to help one of our longer standing communities that didn't have all the latest and greatest criteria. So we're working it and going to make this happen for a lot of those residents. I know there's a few residents out there might be upset about a tree or two, or, and nobody wants to lose a tree in their front yard, but also nobody wants to flood in their house. So there is a priority here, and I think we're, I think we're, you know, set in the right direction. So appreciate you guys for being here. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you've been working with the residents. I assume we're going to continue that, you know, before the dozers show up and start knocking stuff over. There's still, still a few concerns out there with the depth and grading of the ditches, but I mean, it's a cost benefit and to get the storage and conveyance we need it. I just, I know you would, but just on the record, make sure that we're still communicating with all the homeowners out there.
Yes, sir, we will. And, you know, I made sure that they were notified that we were awarding the contract tonight. So they were, they were notified of that and made aware.
Maybe a follow-up question to that. When we're done, are any of these ditches going to qualify as deep enough or steep enough for us to be maintaining?
Councilman Perez, our goal is to remove that, is that's why we've worked with the residents for- Councilman Perez, our goal is to remove that is that's why we've worked with the residents for an extended period of time to either enclose those ditches in pipe scenarios or have them opened up enough to be able to have them maintain it.
Is that the strategy going forward for all of these ditch maintenance, these capital ditch maintenance programs? As to if it becomes too dead, too deep or too steep for us to enclose it with a conduit to prevent having to do maintenance?
All those things are taken in consideration as we develop that to answer that question fully would be project specific.
Okay, thank you.
And that that pro that process for determining if we mow them or not, it's got some very specific criteria that we follow. And if we were to create any that that met that, we would then transition those.
I guess my general concern, I apologize, didn't mean to interrupt.
We try not to, it's just, you know, situations may dictate that we have to.
My general concern is if we're already having kind of a rough bump in the road with the residents, we may not be as excited about this project initially, at least not maybe some of them that don't realize the benefit to them. Let's try and be careful about what we leave them with. I know with other projects and why we had to adopt that, the ordinance for us to maintain is we ended up deepening ditches and it became very difficult for particularly elderly people to maintain. So let's just be cognizant of that, careful of that. I'm I'm sure that you are, but.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, make a point of it.
Member Cam Car?
Just really quickly, we're still on board for November twenty first to start and then March of twenty three to complete. That's still the running.
Stole my question.
Still as per schedule as we move forward.
You stole my question.
All right, I just, I know it's important and so, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty one dash one nine seven.
And Member Carbone, place number six on the table, please.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action resolution R twenty twenty two one dash one nine eight, so moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, staff report?
Nothing to add, this is the testing for that Wesley project.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty one dash one nine eight.
Yes, and Member Cam Car, if you place number seven on the table, please.
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number one six zero eight, so moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, staff report?
As we described in the packet, this is a rewrite of chapter twelve, which are solid waste ordinance. We organized it, tried to clarify, update terms. You know, it doesn't, it it makes it cleaner and more consistent, but doesn't necessarily substantially alter. But we do need to go through this process and consider this a cleanup that's long overdue, nothing to add.
Deal. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number sixteen oh eight.
All right, Member Little, if you place number eight on the table, please.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration of possible action resolution number R twenty twenty one dash two four two, so moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, staff report?
As one of the first council meetings of the new fiscal year, council who's been around, familiar with this. This is following the budget adoption end of September. We bring forward these intent to reimburse. This allows us to formally go forward with the work. We issue the bonds that are commensurate with this capital improvement program later in the year. When and that way, we're not issuing more than we need to. So this intent to reimburse codifies that we will be paying ourselves back, but we will be starting on the work. In the meantime, then the amounts have been detailed in the presentation and I think we have a brief overview, yes?
Yeah.
We have a presentation and show that there have been some reductions even from that, but Amy will walk us through that.
Josh, do you have that? Thanks.
The intent to reimburse for this year, we have a few CIP funding changes as outlined on the second slide. And I've tried to highlight what has changed from the CIP so that council can see exactly what we're doing that's a little bit different than what we had planned on doing several months ago. The Berry Rose expansion was reduced from twenty five million to seven million. It was, you might recall that this was pushed out during the budget process to reduce the water sewer rate to five percent. The J hack expansion was increased one point one, but it was, it wasn't, it was not a bottom line increase. It was just moved from cash funded to debt funded. And again, that was part of the reduction of the rate to five percent. The Orange Street Service Center Phase Two was reduced from sixteen six eighty to four point two. The Hill House Road Annex Phase Two was reduced from seven point nine to approximately three point three. The Shadow Creek Library was reduced because that one is almost completed. And same thing with the Animal Services Center from one million to six hundred thousand. And then also I wanted to note that in the item that you just previously voted on, we reallocated nine hundred and fifty thousand to the Wesley subdivision drainage improvements. But that was not a total dollar change. And that fund five oh six is a fund balance from general obligation debt. Councilman Cam Car?
Can you run that back again?
I'm sorry.
What did you just say?
Yes, five, fund five oh six was fun, it's fund balance from general obligation debt. So the intent to reimburse that's before you tonight has a certificate of obligation total of twenty four million, three hundred forty three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. There's seven point five million from the two thousand and seven GO total. There are nineteen million in TERS reimbursable COs. The twenty nineteen GO total is twenty five million, eight hundred thirty two thousand dollars. And then there's a revenue bonds total of seventy five point nine million dollars. That concludes my presentation.
Nothing to add, back to you, Council.
All right, thank you. We'll open up for council questions, comments. Remember Cam Car? Oh, I saw your light.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anybody else have a question or comment?
Really quickly, so the library is getting reduced from two million to zero. I know where that's coming from, that's TERS weighted COs. What do we, can you explain where we got the two million or do we just did the scope change, get reduced? Did material costs come in low?
I'll start that out. We shared on the last library update that the projects come in and even with the enhancements in the last round of the change where the council approved, we're just under budget by that much, so we don't need to issue the debt.
Cool. Orange Street and Hill House, we had a discussion in the infrastructure meeting a month ago. And there was a discussion around wanting to do that in the CO bucket, a large portion of it. What is, how is this interacting? Going back to the slide that Amy presented.
So I'll start out and then Robert Trent can add. You know, based on some of that conversation and and other and just what we can process, we did time those out. And so those were reduced from the current fiscal year. I mean, they'll still be coming to us, but timing wise, I mean, was it Hill House that we were, we pushed out a little bit, so?
We pushed out both the Orange Street Service Center Phase Two and the Hill House project just based on the progress and where we are with the Orange Street Phase One and that we've got to complete those designs and then move those towards construction. We were able to spread the dollars out for over a longer period of time, so it'll bleed over into next fiscal year.
We're still going to spend on Hill House seven point nine million. We're just doing three three for this fiscal and the balance will.
If I could add, sorry to interrupt, but we looked at those hard and they really need to go in tandem. Just they're linked together with the people and and the timing and such and, you know, they work together. So we were able to push them farther in the year and spread them out, as you said. But we weren't able to wholesale, you know, sequence them one after another. But we get the same effect by doing it this way.
How does this interact with the budget in terms of where we are? Because I'm assuming some of this was more programmed for this year and now it's it's moving. So what is like the ramification for the, what will end up at the end of the year?
So the effect will be that we will, with reductions, we will issue no more than up to these amounts of actual debt for this year. And the way the debt works is you issue it and then the that kicks into the rate the year following. So this will be a slight reduction, correct me wrong, for the debt service portion of the rate for FY twenty three. So that's that's an effect.
That's exciting. We're going to cut the rate next year, Dad, go.
No, we're not.
Oh, okay. All right, a man can hope. So, all right, well, great, I just, I, this is complex and I'd rather look stupid here than look stupid later. So I I appreciate the team indulging my dumb questions.
That's good questions. Questions, comments?
Mayor, real quick, there was some public comments about project FA twenty five oh two. And I don't expect staff to address them now, but before that project moves forward, if you can make sure that, I think there were some valid questions or comments made. If you can get those addressed for us.
Which project was that, Councilmember?
Gun range and the driving range. So we've already made contact, that's a twenty three or twenty four project, so.
It's not currently funded.
Yeah, it's not here at all.
We can address those, though.
It's not under the three point four.
Not included in any of this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Little? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty one dash two four two.
Left off with Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mayor, happy to back clean up. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number one six oh five dash one, so moved.
Have a motion of second, staff report?
This is another good thing, late in September, got word that we were looking to receive additional revenues from a state program that reimburses us for unreimbursed by by the recipients, ambulance transfers. We think it's a one time, but, you know, working with a good consultant who does this paperwork, they 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 did file the the documentation that's necessary. And so we received October one, I believe, one point seven million over and above what we anticipated from that. We usually get about four hundred and fifty thousand. So this item is looking to jump on programming that money and spending it for FY twenty two, putting it to use for one times in in sync with your adopted financial policies. The recommendation is to put those towards a combination of streets and sidewalks. And also, we we have to replace some project software and then appropriate to where the money comes from. But we're also in need of additional ambulance and getting that in order. So we do have a presentation that was in your packet, but for sake of time, stand by for questions.
We'll open it up to questions, comments. Member Owens?
Yeah, in there on one of them, you've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new PM software. Who's the vendor on that?
That'll be determined when we bring that contract forward, but that'll be to be determined for sure.
Now, as you probably know, I've been following that on on that, on on the. And I do know that one of the people, or Atzer, I guess, it was, has had the contract and they weren't shortlisted. But they gave you a a price on there of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five years on it. And the rumor is that this is one point seven million to go with a different vendor. I'll give you a copy of a letter that came from the city saying how great they had worked and done with them. At, I guess it was, who was it during that time, Susan Johnson, the manager? And talking about how great the people at Atzer had worked with them and training the people and and coming in. And and I guess they had about two hundred or a little bit of that or more of problems that they had on it. And they were contacted by the city to take care of those and do those adjustments there at their office. And they they did that. And they were told not to contact the city about those two hundred discrepancies. But anyway, I just wondered if you're going ahead and in doing this and putting it out, there must be a vendor that has given you for that. But I guess we'll have to wait and see who it is. But there's a lot of concern of it. And the and the other part of the concern is that Metro just got their software, the ones that you currently got now. Harris County just got the software on there and they're using for toll roads, the county engineer's office and and also for blood control through there. And these are all components and all people we work with. And so there's just a lot of things on it and there'll be more. And I think the people there will will come and speak at the time when it comes out to make that change. But my concern is if you can, if you had some problems with it, it should have been corrected. But as a tough budget process as we went through, and it's the numbers that on the street are right, we're turning down somebody doing it for five years on a guaranteed maximum price and looking at spending one point seven million. And I'm going to really would like to find out when you get ready to put it on the table, if that number is correct or there's additional money coming from in the budget to do that when we could have done it for a million dollars less.
Mayor, the item is for budget allocation, the allocation for the reference item, there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We must have some capital project software and we're going to look for that discussion and justification for the recommendation when it comes forward.
Do we have a targeted area for the the street repair? Or are we just adding it to the kind of the general fund and trying to tackle projects as as needed?
Councilman Perez, yes, we do have a a list of streets and targeted areas that we would be utilizing these funds for as part of our program, yes.
I know I I kind of communicated this up before, but maybe for the benefit of the citizens who've asked me repeatedly about this, could we put to the top of the list the the street repair that needs to be done in Mimosa Acres? I think I forwarded over some, and I can show you after after the meeting if it helps. But there's some at Cherry and Francis, I think there's some, there's some potholing or actually some settling of the pavement that at least one person that I'm close to has said has become more and more severe. So I I can show it to you after the meeting so that we're clear, but I'd like to see if we can get that pushed to the top of the list.
Councilman Perez, we would, we will take a look at some fill real quick, but with regards to that project, is Cherry Road in that area is part of the Willow Crest project? That'll be doing drainage through there and we'll be putting in boxes through that street, so that road will be repaid, redone.
How quickly is that project moving forward?
Project is bidding this week and then we'll enter in into construction after those bids are received and approved by council.
If if I could, I think, you know, we need to stay systematic on that. I I know you've been kind enough to share that and we did promise and and we'll report back on the interim maintenance because that will be, you know, down the road for probably a year and a half until the reconstruction is done. But we need to do the interim maintenance that we've promised and I'll get you something back on that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I mean, not to, not to be too fine to the point. I've I've been repeatedly asked about what that the status is by several people and I'd like to try and make sure we get it prioritized. So thank you.
And and I, to follow up on that, I I know I've asked specifically about the intersection as well. And I've I've been told we could probably do a little bit of patching to get us through till we completely redo the street. So, you know, and and I was told that with the budget and passing the budget, we we had depleted our supplies. So now that the budget reauthorized additional street repair, that, you know, we should be seeing a little bit of patching in some of those areas. So I I would hope that we would, you know, be able to move forward with some of that. And and certainly, we don't need to go and redo a street to tear it up and put new boxes out in and do that. But if we can, if we can do a little patching until we get there, that would probably be good.
Mayor, as City Manager Pearson stated, that is, that is correct. We're just finalizing our purchase orders and receiving delivery material so we can do those items. We're just finalizing our purchase orders and receiving delivery material so we can do those items.
And if I may, and apologies if I missed this when I stepped out, but can, how were those numbers derived? Because just off the top of my head, I think kind of the delta from where we are and where we're supposed to be with streets and sidewalks, we're about, you know, I think the number that we need to hit for streets is about three times bigger than sidewalks, something on the order of like 1.5 million versus 4.5, 1.5 million additional needed for sidewalks versus 4.5 for streets. So I guess how do we get the ratio where we're spending about twice as much?
So it's pretty simple. We had 1.7 million to allocate. We need a new fire, I'm sorry, ambulance to add to the fleet. That's the 450. We need the project software. That's 250. And what was left gave us the million.
Well, sorry, I guess I just meant between the streets and sidewalks.
Streets, so, I'm sorry. So you're, what?
It seems like it's kind of flipped from, it seems like we need to spend more money on our streets than our sidewalks, especially in light of our survey data.
Well, go ahead.
Was, was the question the split between streets and sidewalks?
Yeah, so the, the question is, I think we're supposed to spend, like, if we were just doing it on a pro rata basis, on what do we have to do in order to catch up? I think we'd spend about three times more on streets than for sidewalks. So I guess I was just wondering how we got to this number where that's kind of inverted two to one for sidewalks.
So the, the main reason behind that is for our FY 22 allocated budget, I think we had about $68,000, $58,000 allocated towards sidewalks. So it was well under our normal spend on sidewalks. So we saw this as a mean to catch, means to catch that back up to our normal spend on sidewalks.
Understood.
Past years.
Okay, yeah, that, that explains it. And then I guess my, I just wanted to use this as a, to ask one more question, which was, I think as part of our early budget discussions and also of our strategy discussions in which one of the biggest things is a capital improvement plan. I, I think someone's working on a memo. I don't know if that's Amy or Eric related to just kind of more comprehensively with our asset management software and then building out a plan to more programmatically address these deficiencies. I guess I just wanted to ask, since we're talking about this now, when we're, when we will next see something on that front for discussion?
The Finance Department was just talking about this earlier today. So we're hoping to have something together around the end of December, early January. It's a, a lot of coordination to put together and we wanted to kind of start rolling into next year's budget discussions as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, certainly a huge thing. And I think any amount of money we can put into this, you know, it's, it's not going to be enough at this point to catch up. But just want to make sure that after this time at least, we're doing that in a really thoughtful way. And I think we, we have a good team in place and are starting to, to lay the groundwork to do that. So thank you and appreciate the answers to the questions.
Do you have any other questions, comments?
I heard the comments from the member, Member Owens earlier on the, on the software and was paying attention during the reporting. And I guess our sidewalks are thought of a little more highly than maybe I think some of us expected. I think the discussion that, when we talked about the grid and Member Carbone brought up the, the parks and what could we do to, to enhance those and, and move those up the chain? I'm just kind of wondering, maybe, you know, this is 1.7, 1.8 million in money. Could we apply those maybe differently? Just wondering, is there maybe any interest in doing so?
So if I could, again, I think it's important, we should in retrospect have added what we're really going to have for a total with, with these amounts. If we don't make this sidewalk allocation because of what we have in the FY 22 budget, we're gonna have virtually nothing for sidewalks in 22. So we need this to, to have a sidewalk program.
And I think that's a very interesting city manager, but I mean, I'm not in gigantic rush to also spend it either. This is roughly two cents on the tax rate. Could we get more data on this? Where are the sidewalks going to be performed? I think Member Perez makes a point, you know, who's next on the list? We're just kind of throwing this in the bucket. I think Member Owens, you know, I think there's questions around the capital project software. I, I kind of would like more data, to be honest. I don't know all the intimations around ATSER or whoever these folks are. You know, it's 1.8 money that can go somewhere and we're just kind of throwing it into the first buckets we see. And I don't feel like there's a ton of data there about what's actually happening. So I, I'm throwing out to the council, maybe we pick the ambulance as the one item that we for sure do. Is there any interest in maybe holding that till we get a little more data on the balance of the 1.3 million? Assuming we did the 450.
I, I think something needs to be done on the capital project software because currently we don't have one being used, correct?
Yes, we're, we're at a point where we're moving off the old software and we've got to make a decision to move forward.
So that, I mean, that's something that's kind of imminent.
My understanding is that's going to come back before us, before it?
This is just allocating, but they're going to come back with a bid or RFP or however that's been. I don't, I don't know the motive of how we're acquiring it.
There was an RFP and we're very close to having the memo out to council on a recommendation and then bring that before you very soon.
Very similar to a budget amendment. All we're doing is making the necessary provisions to change the budget, but we're not allocating the money to a specific contract as of yet. So there's plenty of time for us to review before any, many money is spent.
On a personal level, I mean, I, you know, I heard and saw what the survey says, but we, we probably get more outreach on sidewalk issues than sidewalk and street repair than we do anything. And, and making sure that we are repairing sidewalks and in some cases, actually doing the linkage. You know, we've got a sidewalk here and we got a sidewalk here and we just need to link it. So many times all around town, that, that's what we need is to, to link some of our sidewalks together. We're waiting for development in some of these cases, but if development ever occurs, then there's never a sidewalk there. So I, I don't know. I, I certainly, you know, am, am up for more discussion if that's what people want. But I, I know the ambulance is something we've talked about. Capital project software is, sounds like it's imminent. It's going to be coming back. So I, you know, defer to council how you want to handle this.
You know, I'll, I'll put a motion out there that we, we spend the 450 as allocated. The rest we hold in reserve until we've got more information to be presented. And we'll see if it has a second.
That's fair. That's fair.
So with that, any other questions, comments? Nope. All right. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Okay.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Little. The motion carries six to zero to, the motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1605-1.
All right. With that, we've moved forward in our agenda. We've already handled our matters removed from Senate agenda. No other business, no other mayor council issues before council for discussion. With that, we will be moving into executive session. Under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters Regarding the Annual Evaluation of the Municipal Judge. Section 551.074 Personal Matters Regarding the Annual Evaluation of the City Attorney. And then last, Section 551.072 Deliverations Regarding Real Property. With that, we'll stand, we'll, we'll move into exec session at nine o'clock.
All right, we're running, returning from executive session at 10:21. We will move forward to new business item number, numbers 10, 11, and 12. Entertain a motion on item 10.
Mayor, all understand the motion. We move forward with compensation for the municipal judge as discussed in exact session.
Second.
Have motion of second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion, member Little.
You're forgetting me tonight.
What did he do to you?
Aye.
Why don't you like him?
I do, I do like him. I love him, I'm sorry. Member Little. Motion carries six to zero.
All right, moving to item number 11. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I recommend we move forward with compensation as the city attorney has discussed in city or in exact session.
Motion of second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little. The motion carries six to zero.
And last but not least, new business 12. Entertain a motion on it.
Mayor, I move that we authorize city attorney to negotiate in terms discussed in exact session.
Second.
Motion of second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for that vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right, with that, we will move to adjournment at 10:23 p.m. Good evening.